All right, being six thirty, I'd like to call the Finance, Fire and Administration Committee to order. One of our members is here, but will be here shortly. But if we want to proceed, uh.
Good evening.
All right.
Members of council, this probably doesn't land. My name is Ronald Truce. I'm the president of the Mechanics for Volunteer Fire Department. Also, I want to just at this time introduce Ben Reed, who is one of our directors, and Elizabeth Neff, who is our treasurer.
Good department.
Let's not do a brief info, and then we'll turn it over then. In two thousand and twelve, the Russian Fire Company and the Citizens Fire Rescue Company approached Borough Council with a request to increase the funding given to them. The council formed a steering committee to explore the consolidation of the two companies and increase the fire funding. Along with members of both companies, John Anthony is a business owner, and Ben Reed does another borough that are chosen to serve on the steering committee. Through our meetings and such, on December thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, Borough Council passed the fire tax ordinance, saving only at zero point five mils. And that's what it's been since. Since then, the two companies have united to form Mechanics for Volunteer Fire Department. There's a few things that we still need finalized, but we have been working as one department. Along with the administrative paperwork that comes with the new department, we have been working on a long-term financial plan. The investment fire tax budget under guidance of Borough Manager Roger Soski, and Borough Fire Chief Director Neff has allowed Mechanics for Volunteer Fire Department to operate on a day-to-day basis and, at the same time, allow us to press some money reserves for future capital expenditures. We are here tonight to present to the committee and other members of council our ten-year financial plan. This plan includes the construction of a new station to house all the apparatus, replacement apparatus on a schedule, upgrade communications, and power pay drivers, and purchase all the valuable equipment as a means to continue to provide the residents and businesses or the borough with a first-rate fire service. So at this time, I want to turn the microphone over to Ben Reed.
Thank you, Ron. I'll be very brief because that is information in the piece that's most meaningful. I think it's important to note that the work that Mechanics for Volunteer Fire Department Finance Committee has done has been a lot, and it was a recognition that we've kind of reached the most that we can put together, the most that we reasonably should put together without involving, you know, council or the finance committee first to present to them. So, and you'll see that it does contemplate increased revenue, presumably from an increased fire tax. So it's a topic that's not, you know, approached lightly. So we wanted to formally come before you and then hopefully start to work through the pieces to make this ten-year plan hopefully a reality. So I'll hand it off to Beth.
All right. Good evening. It's so good to be here. You know we're really making history tonight. It's been a long time since the two companies come together and we can actually say that we're moving forward with a new facility and a ten-year plan. I don't think, I know we've had plans in the past, but not a combined plan. The two companies have come together and we can actually move the department forward. Because this is very exciting. It's very exciting for a department. I'm sure it's very exciting for all of you also, because many of you have been part of this consolidation merger. So earlier, I would pass on to John, did you get a chance to pass all of that over to the?
Pushed into the finance committee, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So I'm going to make it clear that this is just for discussion purposes only, but you have an opportunity to look at that. The plan is laid out over ten years, and as Ron was saying in the beginning, it does include the things that are needed for the fire department. And I've listed those down here. And like I said, discussion purposes only. The new fire station, it has it starting in two thousand and twenty-two, however, with groundbreaking and things, we know it takes up to twelve months for a lot of permits and everything for that situation to occur. So it includes, very first line, the operating expenses. That is the current operating expenses that exist today. If you recognize that number, it should be, because that's part of the budget that was allocated for the fire department. And that one, as you see over the next ten years, increases over four percent. And the reason for that is because costs do up. Repair and maintenance, operations, operating things along those lines. The next one is the new fire station. I do have the note down there about the estimated debt service for the building. Tom Wedgwick, we're working with him on the design and structure of that. The third line, the driver. This is important to the fire department, and it's very important to the community. Because this is a need and much needed. As we are, as our run rate is increasing, as everybody's getting busier, it doesn't pay to have apparatus sitting in the fire station if you can't get it to the scene and put water on the fire. So it's something that we need to look at to make sure that we're providing the service to the community that is needed. The radio, we have this, our mallets here for two thousand and twenty-three. And then in addition to that, we put brand equipment, and then the list goes down with SCBA, and we did put reduction of OpEx. We are going to expect to have some type of reduction of operating expenses as the two companies come together under one roof. And I can't stress enough how important the new fire station is to get under one roof. It's just for the health and well-being, but also the response time. Everybody's coming out of different locations. It's just confusing at times when equipment is cold. And then we have then underneath there, you'll see the apparatus replacement schedule. This is a ten-year plan. And if you look down into the notes, there is a replacement schedule for two thousand and thirty-four for a tower truck. And I have that information there. We'll show it to you also. So just keep that in mind when you're looking down through the sheet. Does anybody have any questions right now on the top part of the spreadsheet, where it shows all the expenses?
I'm interested to know where you came up with the one forty-four, two fifty for a driver.
Sure, absolutely.
How you came about that number?
Well, what I did is it took the hourly rate times the number of hours. It's really only a driver from Monday through Friday, eight hours a day. For the volunteer organization at this time, based on this schedule, we would still have to cover evenings and off day weekends, which is still a commitment to volunteers of the organization. Then in addition to that, we put a point two-five percent multiplier on that. That would cover any additions of vacations, benefits, anything along those lines. In addition, we put in their station rent and also turnout gear. So it's actually a driver and potentially two-part time to cover if that driver's off, sick, or anything like that. So that equates to the one forty-four.
And so the hourly rate on the?
I'm sorry, twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay, thanks.
Now, what is neat, I think, because there's a lot of work that goes involved behind the scenes to run a, to run a fire department, is many other departments use that position for administration services. So that person could also take up additional responsibilities within the department, run reporting, run reports, you know, things along those lines that are able, that we're doing from a volunteer standpoint that maybe could be passed off to that person, too. So it's not like they would just be sitting there and if, you know, if the run's not happening, they'd be utilized in other ways. And that's true. That's something that can be looked at. I know it's happening in other areas. We can make it customized. We can make it unique to fit the borough needs at that time. Does that answer your question?
It does. So I'm, please forgive me for looking like the devil's advocate here, but I just need to get my head around some of it. The increase in operating expenses, you've weighed a fourth percent per year, yet that driver amount doesn't change over the course of the ten years.
Correct.
So you're not going to give that person a raise, and they're never going to get a raise?
Not on the schedule. Technically, they could. They might. And we have to maybe look at that, but for this ten-year schedule, that's what we put in there.
Okay. Thanks.
Uh, questions, Beth? I also want to keep in mind on the SCBA, the savings out of thousand dollars are listed on two thousand and twenty-three. Please make note to the one below, where that is, we are currently and already have processed a request for grant. SCBAs to replace for our department are approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars versus fifty self-contained breathing apparatus, but the grant doesn't support one hundred percent. We have to do a certain match, which really equates about approximately seventy-five thousand. It's important that we do replace all the SCBA, depending on where we go and what we deal with, because of the universal connections and body breathing and things along those lines. There's some technicalities behind it that require us to upgrade them at all at one time.
And what's compared to the radios, I thought we had had discussions at the council level about either the county or someone through, I don't know, this COVID money or whatever, that would provide radios.
The county is still looking into that, and they're still up in the air as to what they're going to do. Their plan is to offer discounted radios, but from the police side of things and potentially from the fire department side of things, we're looking at potentially using, yes, the ARP money.
So that could have a positive effect going that way, though?
Yeah. I know Chief, I know Chief Myers was able to work a very good deal and replace her portable radios. The mobile radios are the expensive ones, and I think you have eight mobile radios, I believe, that are the most expensive. So they're the ones that are, they're the cost, they're the ones that are mounted in vehicles. And those are the costly ones. Chief has changed, Chief Myers has changed hers out as she's getting new vehicles, and she's getting compatible with P two-five system that's going to be putting the second account.
So I guess what I'm saying is that two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars could be reduced, but it's pending time. I could maybe help some of that.
Okay, President. So right now, I don't know, earlier, a couple of months ago, I identified that Kingsbury State Police gave us a very healthy donation of radios, used radios, but quite a few of them are new. And when I say that, mobiles and portables. And my understanding is, is Cumberland County, it's still bumped out maybe two years from now. So hopefully that will take care of us for another two years. Now, through those radios, I just had the technician look at them last week in my office. So the mobiles, we would not be able to remove the new P twenty-five system, but quite a few of the newer Harris brand P twenty-fives, it might be an option for about the cost of four hundred dollars a piece versus four thousand dollars a piece to be able to retro them, program them to our needs, once we switch over to the P twenty-five. And what we're also understanding is when that day comes, we're really requesting and hoping that the commissioners, county commissioners, support us and giving us at least a half a year of the nine months of an overlap, where we have time to keep the prior system up and running so that we can fully function. So some of those numbers, we were able to, we just looked at, you know, whenever the committee asked, we, my thought on it. So does that help? Where there is a little room in there.
Absolutely. So, yeah. Anytime you make a ten-year projection, there's always things that can help or hurt the projection, you know. I'm just trying to look at the whole, the whole picture here.
And that's, and that's why we're here this evening, because I think it's important that we do look at it. These are the things that are on the table for us to face as a fire department, that we know that are coming. So I think they're a real question. So, thank you.
Beth, before we move on, so I apologize. I want to go back to the driver question real quick.
Sure.
Just so that maybe we can get a breakdown from you at some point in the future. The salary you're talking about represents about thirty-six percent of the total that you're asking for. And so I'm sure that's going to come back up in discussion as to why that's there's sixty-one percent more for the turnout gear and the other things that you mentioned. So if you could maybe give us a little bit more detail on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I already have the breakdown of per hour with the turnout gear and then the station areas. It's already broken out.
Thanks.
Doing some research in the, in the area and knowing the quality of people that we would want and the qualifications that we would want. They must be a driver. They must be firefighter certified, things along those lines. So they can be diversified, but they're still.
Correct.
And like I said earlier, we can also look at other things that that person would be able to do within the department that would potentially, you know, provide them additional work.
And would bring more value to you.
That's right. Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll be happy to follow up on that and take that as an actual answer now. So if you look down at the total expense line that goes across, and below that is the revenue. And today, we approximately get forty thousand dollars a year in sun drive money. That is in the door, approximately forty thousand dollars, but there's several thousand dollars of expense. So if you net that out, I would say it's.
No, it's about four, thirty about forty.
Forty, forty thousand, run rate, okay.
Yeah.
Then we also identify the state grant fire tax that we get. And that is something that we get pretty much every year. It's not a hundred percent guaranteed, but that's the run rate. The next one is the fire tax that the, the increase. And like I said, this is for discussion only. This is something that when we back into the number to be able to do the apparatus replacement, to be able to have some type of reserve, because we know that tower truck is coming up in two thousand and thirty-five, things along those lines. That's the number that you can freely set from highest and lowest throughout those ten years, but we have to tap into reserves in front and then pull into some other. So if you look under the over and under line, you'll see that's the difference between the revenue and the expenses, and then what that shows in the carried over. Does that make sense? Are there any questions on that?
So you know what the number is for the fire tax currently?
Three, three.
It's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. About a three, three nineteen eight oh two.
So you're looking for a three times increase?
Well, we, that's, I mean, we budget, I went off the budget number.
It's the, 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 Borough levy fire tax is a half mil.
Right.
And the total, the income that we get from what comes in is three, we use three nineteen eight oh two as our baseline, because that's ninety-three percent of what is levied. And that's what we figure on collecting.
That's our three percent is our run rate?
Yep.
So don't remind me to be disappointed by the county of part of your cap.
And there is, there is, yeah, there's fire tax year running in there and stuff like that, but the base rate levy is, is a half a mil right now.
Right. So what we're asking is, well, what we're providing to you tonight is the cost of doing business. This is the cost of doing business for our fire department within the borough and the things that are coming up, down, and through this ten-year plan. Is that number followed? Is that number, no, I think it's one of those things that we need to look at. We need to look at what we have available in the way of revenue for the radios. We need to look at other things. But when you look at this plan that is in front of you and you plug the numbers in, that's what the number comes up to. Obviously, this is an Excel spreadsheet, and then a beauty of that is, you can go in there and you can change some figures and adjust it, and the formulas adjust themselves. So what we're asking is for this to be looked at, so you can have a better understanding of what is needed going forward. Also, keep in mind that the, we do, the only debt that the fire company has today on its books is the engine one twenty-nine, and that's listed down there, which is about a thousand dollars a month, and the payoff is a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That is lots to be paid off until two thousand and thirty-five. So what would be advantageous is if we were able to get that paid off before we start replacing some apparatus. So.
Which line is that on in your expenses at the top?
It's just in the operating expenses. It's included in there.
The new fire station with a payment of twenty, two hundred and ten thousand, what's the, what's the purchase price of the mill that you're going to borrow?
Because right now, estimated what Tom Wedgwick gave us was four point five for thirty-five years, approximately three percent. We're looking at the USDA loan. And that can, that can change too often, obviously, but that's what we have for budget carry purposes today.
Four point five, thirty-five years.
Mm-hmm. Two percent.
Three percent.
Yeah.
That's a fixed rate, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it is. You can go to forty years for a USDA loan, but they do not recommend that.
So the current mortgage that's going is half a mil. So with a four and one mil increase on that, we're still, we would still come out under what you're estimating.
Based on what, I'm not the expert in the mill. That's what your expertise is, but it looks like it would be about point nine in addition to the existing. So it's less than a mil.
Well, it's actually only one and a quarter. Yeah, it's one and, it'd be one and a quarter.
Total?
Yeah, it's going to be one and a quarter mils tax increase.
Yeah, I mean, I think from our perspective, we started to crunch our numbers, but that gets more into.
So the fire tax, the council would have to, to make this number that you have on this budget, council would have to set the fire tax at one point seven five mils.
We'd have to look at, we would have to look at what does, what it is, and the, you know, evaluate. What we're asking here is, is to work with you as a partnership to say, hey, this is what we're faced with. And it's not just us, it's a team effort. And it's something that we need to work together to come up with a solution.
You know, what's wonderful is that you put together a plan with all of this information here, and it's going to be, I mean, that's, this is an amazing start. So, yeah, we're very much looking forward. I just want to make sure that we've got all of our questions out now, and then we'll dig into it a little bit further, and then maybe come back and have another conversation. So we have another question from council based on what you've been, from the committee and then council. God.
What's your timeline on, like, you're, you're going to have this discussion, what is your timeline on asking us for some action?
Well, obviously, we have things in front of us that are needed. And we do have a contract with Tom Wedgwick that's in front of us that is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is the engineering, the design, all the permitting for the new location. We, um, I would like, we understand there is fire tax reserve. We would like to request if we could, we would like to move forward with Tom Wedgwick, since it takes about twelve months for all of that to be done before the shovel can get in the ground. So we would like to request that we get those funds that we would be able to, or just understanding when Tom Wedgwick invoices us that we pass it off, and then that will be paid. So we would like to move forward with that, because, like I said earlier, the urgency of getting under one roof, I can't stress enough how important it is from a safety standpoint, from a retention standpoint, from an everything standpoint. So the timeline, your, your question to the timeline is, I guess, I'll sooner than later.
What, what's in the reserve now? Does anybody know?
I'm hooked.
Let's just have to open it up.
She has to get it open. I know we're, I think we're well over four hundred thousand in there. So the money's there that we could use that, that we could pull out of the reserve. That's, that's at Citizen Bank. So we have that there. There's, there was another portion of this, too, that I've got a few questions on. Are you, Beth, are you and the committee going to be submitting a budget like we've done in the past, or is this your budget that you're submitting?
No, we'll be happy to submit a budget. I have a, I have a, I have a department budget also.
Okay. Because we need that for our, to get our budget presentation ready for.
We can, we can definitely do that. And I'm going to go back to what you were saying about the tax increase, because that was based off the three sixty-five, and you're saying that was lower. So you're saying the existing expenses. I was going off the existing expenses of the current budget of three sixty-five, so we'll have to, I can't update that and see what that truly is. I'll get the finance team to do that.
On the two thousand and twenty budget, we did, we had a year-to-date at the final budget, and I don't have the date, what year the date was on here, but it was three nineteen eight oh two. And that's, we figured usually around three twenty, three sixty-five is what it is, but we figured ninety-three percent positive collection rate. And we do that across the board with everything. So, and then the prior year fire tax stuff gets added into that, you know, and it comes up to a total. Down at the bottom of total revenues on the two thousand and twenty-one budget was three, three hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
So that's not all tax money. The tax money is just the top line.
Right.
Your fire reserve balance to base is five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, five hundred and forty-two and twenty-five cents.
Wait. That's at Citizens?
Yes. Five seventy-nine, five forty-two, and twenty-five cents.
And I do want to just remind you the things that the fire department has done to condense, save money, sell off extra apparatus, doing everything we can to, you know, cut our expenses. We did have to purchase the home beside us, one, two hundred South York Street. That was approximately two hundred thousand dollars that we paid out of our funds from selling the consolidation of the companies, and then we sold an apartment building down and built that one. So we can build our facility. As you know, that's the site that we're, we have to build on. So we had to do that. So we, right now, we probably about a hundred and some thousand also in our, in our money market right now. And I can be, share all that with the finance committee, too. I have a, a budget sheet I would do every month for the department that shows our, our monthly run rate expenses for utilities and things along those lines.
I think, you know, one more thing in consideration, you know, we certainly invite council and the finance committee to look at all options and present any, you know, ideas to us. This contemplates paying cash for, you know, apparatus upgrades. I mean, they can be financed. I know it's not in our nature to be borrowing for everything, but it doesn't, we don't have to pay cash for these. It certainly contemplates the price tag we currently see for the facilities and the new facility. It doesn't contemplate, you know, capital campaigns or grants or additional funding, which at this point in time, we don't feel like we can rely on. And obviously, a factor also is how long the debt service is on the facility. I mean, you can't get around, you have to finance that, you know, at least in part. And the interest rate, although, you know, three percent is obviously a very low rate. So I wanted to point those out.
And that's another reason why we really don't want to delay too much further, because we all know inflation, inflation is happening, and we know the cost of things costs more. And, and so we would like to, you know, get some, the rate locked in. As soon as we can do that, that would be wonderful if we could do that, too. And I also just want to explain also, because I'm not sure if you're aware of it, our NDSB budget is a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars a year. That's what we have budgeted for our department. That includes training. It includes maintenance stations, all those other things. Forty-one percent of that comes from the borough, the three sixty, the three sixty-five that I had on there or the three ten. Forty-one percent. The remaining of that comes from sun drives, sun reading, and grants and relief reimbursements. So just keep that in mind, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. Forty, you know, forty-one percent is out of the existing fire tax. The rest is being made up between other means. So it's also just a point to remember that that is something that we have to work on every year to make sure that we can make the existing budget of the NDSB outside of the money that we get from the borough. So. Are there any other questions for me?
Sarah, are you okay?
I think you answered my question. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Jill?
Good, thanks.
Good morning. Good. You good?
Yep.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, I want to say thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll give the committee some time to digest this, and then maybe we'll pull together another meeting to talk through.
You have two meetings scheduled for budget discussion. This is kind of, this is something we're kind of waiting on to get tied into the, our budget before we make the presentation. Once I get that stuff, then I can get that, that budget out to you, and we'll be ready to start talking about that. But like I said, you have two budget meetings scheduled already.
There we go, though.
Yeah, and we can talk about this at one of those meetings also, if we need to.
But you need this to create our budget?
I need some of this, I need some of this, I need their proposed budget, the way it's set up. If we're going to expand it, you know, and I will, there's, this is going to affect our budget in how. If we're wanting to expand it, you know, and I will, there's, this is gonna affect our budget and how we have it, how we're, we're approaching certain things in our budget also.
There's no, there's, forgive me if I'm incorrect on this, there's no way we're gonna put a fire tax through that would take effect where we could fund this starting in June.
Could, but I don't know if that would be true, yeah, I don't think that's our idea.
So the third path, the path is we need you to get your budget to Roger so that we can get our budget done. And we may, right now, with this in consideration, so that we can, we'll put this forward as fast as we can, but we can't wait for this in order for you to be able to provide for him, and we need, so that we can do the...
First, we'll get him right away, what he needs.
Yeah.
And I think we have, we have the reserves, so we can, we can lock Tom in, we can start the permit process, we can get the groundwork done. And I, and coming from, you and I are both from the same field, we know that that does take a while to do.
It does.
All right, so we can, we can get that money to you, get that locked in, get Tom locked in, and keep the ball rolling as council considers this, this proposal going forward, so...
And, and I would just like to say, as you consider it, um, and we have to work closely together because of the request for the loan. It does, the, as of today, we already spent over twenty to thirty thousand dollars in taxpayer's money to find the locations for the fire department. So we need to continue to move on the fire building to get us under one roof. So as I move process forward with the USDA loan, it's gonna be important that we're communicating, so your question of how fast you do need it, I will maybe be reaching out to finance committee if they want additional support or anything like that for the loan purposes. Does that make sense?
Yes, we'll work it out in separate conversations.
Okay, that would be wonderful, 'cause I don't wanna delay that process, you know, we don't wanna delay that process.
Yes, I understand.
So, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Very. Okay. Okay.
All right.
I think so.
I, I have one thing.
Yes, sir, maybe you have.
So as of September sixteenth, we had, of the current yearly budget this year, uh, we expanded two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And I don't really look for anything that was much of a, more of a drawdown on that, maybe fifty thousand dollars to follow through with that. But I think if we're gonna be a good bit under budget this year, that we'll be able to carry over, which is healthy, because we can't have made over the mountain. Uh, when it, it took a good bit of money for Ring Three Branded and everything, bringing the companies together and repositioning, but with the liquidation of assets, like a few of them, vehicles primarily, um, we have, you know, say, some money, so that's gonna be one of the key benefits. And thanks for working with the fire department through that.
Just, what you've done so far is amazing, that you have, the money that you have set aside is incredible, over half a million dollars plus what you have in reserves, enough to be able to buy a building on your own. I mean, what, the work that you folks have done, I don't think we, I think you understood it, it is absolutely awesome. We want to support you, we just need to make sure that we do it the right way. Thank you, Chief, any else?
That's all, okay.
Thank you.
All close to the finance committee, please. So...
So it's now September twenty-one, and I would like to call this October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, meeting up in the Central Borough Council Two Order. We will begin with a pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. Our flag will be lifted to the right of the United States of America, and to the right of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hold on.
President Obama?
Yes.
Vice President Obama?
Yes.
Mr. Biden, I would like to have Hillary Clinton, George Soros, Alman, Mary Ritter, President Clinton, Alexandria Valancey, James Meyer, James Knut, EMT Morgan, Madam President.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Bluegrass and Best for Tuesday, Mr. Sodzinski and Jeff Introduce him for us, please.
Yes, um, Ben Meisels from Blue Card Horn, uh, and David Mayer, they're with the Friends, the South Mountain Charlie Greenway, uh, update. Out of the last meeting that we had, um, it was decided that we need to get some updates to council, and, uh, that's why Ben's here tonight. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm, uh, Ben Letcher with Blue Card Horn, I'm the consultant for the South Mountain Charlie Greenway project, uh, that is currently being sponsored by Municipal Lead by Mechanicsburg Borough. Um, and we provided a packet of information to you, there are some handouts, just, uh, wanted to give you an update and give you an opportunity for asking questions. Um, I'd just like to start the, uh, presentation by reminding everyone that, um, the current funding for this project's coming from DCNR and, um, also the county, as well as the Friends of the South Mountain Charlie, uh, Trail Group. Um, so right now, Mechanicsburg Borough isn't putting any money into the project, but your staff is leading it and providing assistance in that way, which is greatly appreciated. Um, so we look at the first figure that we provided, um, this one here with, uh, the zoomed out view looking at York and Cumberland County. That shows the historic alignment of the, of the Dillsburg and Mechanicsburg Railroad. And, um, in our first one we did in two thousand and nineteen with Silver Spring Township, they were municipal lead for that. We didn't have enough money to do the entire feasibility study at that time, but they took the lead for that first part of it. Um, we basically broke the trail into three sections, you can see there, uh, the, the blue line is north of the Turnpike, you know, St. Trindel Spring section. And it's most apt to look in Mechanicsburg Borough, uh, there's a smaller township section in yellow, and then the York section in orange. By the way, I brought some extra copies, if anyone in the audience wants to get a copy of the exhibits that we're, we're talking about here. So the phase two, so let's focus in on this area north of the Turnpike, which makes sense for Mechanicsburg to lead, since Silver Spring had just got done leading the previous phase. And so if you turn to the next exhibit, there's a lot of the population on here, some people ask, you know, who's gonna use this trail? Basically, this shows the, uh, the alignment of the trail in orange in the middle, and then we did a five-mile buffer around it. Um, and if you add up all the census blocks in that area, it comes out to a hundred and thirty-six thousand people live approximately within five miles of this trail. So there's significant population, a conventionally useless trail. Um, next, she chose a summary of, um, of the questionnaire that we provided, the online questionnaire, uh, in the phase one process, and we got really good responses, we had over thirteen hundred responses to the online questionnaire. You can see that broken down there by municipality, there was, um, a hundred and twenty responses from Mechanicsburg Borough, which is about one percent of the population, uh, responder. And the next page shows, I mean, obviously, this was sent, you know, out, probably people are interested in travel more likely to answer the survey, but ninety-seven percent response, responded positively in favor of the trail, so, you know, you can see this from looking, there's almost thirteen hundred people responded to the survey in the area who are interested in, in this, uh, Greenway, um, and support, very supportive of it. Um, so this kind of, just to put, put some background to, um, you know, why we're doing this, and what kind of support there is, what kind of grassroots support there is for this project. In this phase, we've been focusing, as I said, we've been focusing on the segment north of the Turnpike, the Trindel Spring section. And, um, we're fortunate enough to get easement, actually, it's shown by Mr. Rort, who lives just barely in smaller township on the south side of, uh, Trindel Road there. Yeah, that's the exhibit, the one that was shown up there, we see the multicolored, you can really touch one we're talking about now. So we wanted to focus on that property, uh, there were some questions about how much wetlands from that property and what we could do with it. Uh, the wetland investigation showed that indeed there are a lot of wetlands from that property, and, um, that it would be pretty difficult to permanent path that we originally were thinking of doing, the grade on there to the, on the right side, the east side, um, along the Rort's property, it's shown in yellow. So, um, and, and in the original script, we had kind of anticipated that, um, so we had funding set aside for looking at, going back to the original alignment, which is shown in green. And we began to just work our way down the alignment, working out from the Rort's property, contacting individual property owners to try to acquire easement or get their support for the trail. And a lot of that was done by Dave Mar here, um, as well as Ben Lummer, with the conservation, uh, function, conservation, um, conservancy, sorry. And, uh, so this is color coded by the responses that we got, basically, uh, yellow is if we have an easement already, orange is if we had a favorable conversation, but we don't have an easement yet. Uh, the dark orange is no response to date, and then red is opposed to the trail. And to date, we had a meeting with Trindel Station, um, and they, uh, they're split pretty much. There, most of the people on the eastern side of the development were, seemed to be opposed to it, so we're showing that in red, um, for that area. Uh, so, you know, one, one aspect of this, of this phase is to investigate the Rort's property. Another aspect is to continue to have study committees, so we meet with stakeholders from all the local municipalities, um, Silver Spring Township and, um, the Friends Group, uh, so, you know, Mechanicsburg representatives and others, uh, DCNR. And, uh, and then also, we've had, continued, as you can see, outreach to property owners. And additional outreach, which is most pertinent to Mechanicsburg, is additional outreach to the northern side, to Norfolk Southern. Uh, so if you can, if you can scroll up. Yeah, so just turn to the next exhibit, kind of zoom in on just the Mechanicsburg section. Um, so we actually started trying to reach out to Norfolk Southern about two years ago, and, um, we finally got a response this year from the, so, um, we actually had a good phone call this afternoon, talking with representatives, Roger and others were on that call as well. Um, so, um, you know, we used, DCNR actually awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant for this round, uh, which is matched by local funding, so far we've only had match funding for about half of that. So there's still about twenty-five thousand dollars remaining from DCNR that could potentially be used towards ridersway acquisition if we find the matching funds. Um, so I thought we were all having the phase two, and, um, Dave was here, he's done a lot of work on, um, working with the, the Friends or the Trail Group, really getting them up to speed, and I'll just let you talk about that for everybody else.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, talk before most of you, I think there's some new faces on, on the council, so I'm, I'm Dave Mar, I'm the, well, now I'm the president of the South, of the Friends of the South Mountain Charlie Greenway. Um, yes, as Ben mentioned, Beaton, very active, uh, as, as the feasibility study's been moving forward, working with the borough, uh, staffs and other state and regional representatives. The, the Friends Group, the volunteer side, doing, doing a lot of, uh, property owner outreach, we're trying to figure out where could this trail quarter be. Uh, and as, as Ben mentioned, we've been having a lot of good, um, positive responses, a lot of people are, are running and are willing to still continue the conversation, so that's huge. Um, and that's, that's along the entire, thanks, uh, we still have some property owners to, to make contact with, especially in New York County and in the, you know, middle areas, um, but we got some good momentum going at the Dillsburg end as well. Um, one of the things that we were trying to figure out was one of the suggested next steps from the phase one part of the feasibility study was, uh, not only to, um, create a Friends Group, but also to figure out what that Friends Group, um, fiscal status might be. Uh, as a Friends Group of a, of a rail trail, you know, we would be stepping in, just as other rail trails around the country, um, to be part, to be that management's, um, fellowies and volunteer side of, of a trail. Um, or even potentially owning the trail, um, you know, there's all kinds of different ways it shifts out there. Um, and so we had investigated many different options, uh, one of which being setting up our own five oh one tree, tree status, uh, and then we also solicited, reached out to different, um, organizations in the region that have, uh, that either own the rain cane trails or that have some sort of a, um, parallel focus, um, and so our surprise, actually, we reached out to the Cumberland Valley Rail Trail Council. They're a nonprofit entity, they've been around for twenty-plus years, um, that, uh, has been building and owning and managing the Cumberland Valley Rail Trail between Chippensburg and Newville, and actually keeping a little bit closer towards Carlisle every day. Um, and, uh, they were a bit excited about taking us on, uh, because they saw us as not only historically a member of Cumberland Valley Railroad Trail, um, but also, uh, just another trail within the Cumberland Valley region and totally in line with their mission. Uh, and plus, we were bringing volunteers with us, so it made their jobs a little bit easier, all they needed to do for us was set up a bank account, uh, and, um, we're, we hit the ground running. Um, so that's what we've been doing the last, well, over the summer, really, um, has been really getting that structure up and running, um. We've been having monthly meetings with our Friends Groups, um, we actually just did the Dillsburg Farmers' Fair this past weekend, which is really, uh, we're really well received there, people are really excited about it, uh, and are, again, beginning to solicit those donations. One of the donations that we received from a resident, one of our volunteers, uh, supporters in Dills, in the Dillsburg area, um, is potentially, um, you know, match that Borough could be using towards this project. Um, even though he lives on the other end, he does see that this being a component piece, you know, the, uh, uh, an early step to kind of get everything moving, you know, keep it moving forward, so we were really appreciative of that. Um, but we created, uh, so we just want to have a slide, even though it's not, it's not a hat or a t-shirt or anything, but, um, we did create some, uh, little handout. Um, posters that I'll pass around, on the backside here, and my heart extra is very likely to be interested, but, um, as I mentioned, we are now officially a part of the Cumberland Valley Rail Trail Council, so we do have presence on their website, uh, you can find our donate button, as well as their donate button, um, uh, that will go directly to us that we can then use moving forward on this project. Uh, you can also join our, um, mailing list and email us if you want, and other social media accounts, so, um, I think that was everything I really wanted to hit, there's, there's, there's already so much I can talk about, I can go on for hours, but if there's any questions for me after that, or Ben, if you wanna take, if that goes, I'll pass you.
I have a question, but I do have a comment. I just wanna thank you for coming in, this was super helpful in understanding the, the presentation, what we're doing, how you're gonna be, it was great, thank you, thank you.
Sure, yeah, and I, I apologize if, you know, we haven't been around enough, uh, time runs really fast, um, but now you have, you know, that, so anytime you have any questions that I can answer, feel free, obviously, if you want one.
And you guys, and I'm gonna push that out, I'll figure out order, but the, the Friends Group is a really nice group, so if you, if you find it Saturday, can you usually be on Sunday morning?
Well, we do one, once a month now, and we're alternating, uh, in person and virtual, um, but if you are interested in attending those, they, they kind of morph more into our, um, steering, I don't wanna say executive, but sort of our steering committee. Uh, we don't really have a need yet for workdays or those type of volunteer efforts, but, um, certainly when you log on to try to join our emailing list, there's different options for how you want to be involved, uh, and one of them is for future potential workdays once something is built, yeah.
There's a good energy there.
And I'll leave them in the back too, for the end mail function. So, thank you.
If there's, uh, no other questions, that's, that's all we had.
There is agenda, I am here, um, and I think when we get to that point, and if it's with Cassidy, we'll have the comments, maybe have comments on that too, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, good.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any students' comments or requests at this time? Hearing none, um, before we move on to the, um, actually agenda portion and the liaison portion, I want to announce that we did have an executive session, um, following our last meeting on October the third, with no action taken. And, uh, we had an executive session this evening at approximately seven, twelve P M, with possible action to be taken during this meeting. Both were on matters of personnel. That being said, is there any correspondence? Uh, there is an email chain that I included in your package, um, this is one of those ones that's kind of high level, but you can look through the cracks really quickly if we're not, if we don't stay diligent on it, that is the tolling of the I-83 bridge across Susquehanna River. Um, this came up at, uh, the Commissioner's Outreach Meeting they had a couple, about a month and a half ago, uh, we signed on to a letter opposing this and listing the reasons why. Uh, Pendott does not want to meet with the municipalities directly, they want to have an open town hall meeting, as you can see in this email, um, a bunch of my, um, counterparts are not happy about this because we know how it's going to affect, uh, traffic in our town, what's going to be going on, and, uh, the kind of impact it's bringing, plus, at a town hall meeting, uh, we're just another voice in the very large crowd that's there. We want to be able to speak to Pendott directly with this. Uh, you'll see my comment on there, uh, that after working on Pendott projects in the past, when they're to the point that they're assigning consultants, this is much further down the road than what they're telling anybody. So, it is closer to becoming a reality than what I think anybody realizes. Um, and tolling the I-83 bridge across Susquehanna is going to be impacting our residents quite a bit, uh, even though we're, what, thirteen miles away from that bridge, you're still going to see a major impact in town from that. So, uh, that is the correspondence, I will keep everyone up to date, updated as to this. I will put the dates to the town hall meeting, have them put out on the website, uh, that way the residents can, can attend those meetings, there is a virtual, I'm not sure how the virtual meeting that goes from October twenty fifth to November eighth works, but, um, if you notice on there, that was one of the pages that was on there, there was a virtual meeting that's, I, I don't know how it's, went so long, but, um, yeah, here, the virtual public meeting begins on October twenty fifth and ends on November twenty fourth, so I'm not sure. Maybe Pendott should use, instead of having somebody run a Zoom meeting, that one, they use that money to fix the bridge, but, um, that's, that's the big one that's coming down the road, and I think that's going to affect everyone in the not-too-distant future. That's all I have for correspondence, sir. Thank you very much. All right, we will need a, uh, motion to approve the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of October fifth, twenty twenty-one, do I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarton, is there a second? A second. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, is there any discussion, additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, uh, Blenda, will you ask the?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, thank you. Very good. Um, Mr. Booker, Department of Energy Council.
The EAC did not meet this past Thursday, I think they're planning to see if they can reconvene this week, um, on Thursday.
We advertised for Thursday, we have a quorum.
So there, we'll do it Thursday.
We won't have a meeting in November because of Stat Trump Day, so the, please schedule a meeting or replace those.
Thank you, Blenda.
Okay, very good, um, and now you're up again, there, there was a horrible meeting this month. All right. Moving on, line review, Mr. Miller.
There's been no action on the previously discussed application, so I have no, no report of it.
Thank you, and Mr. Loefter, Mr. Miller.
The initial authority met last night, and two items that were on the agenda were reviewable and discretion of the sanitary sewer budget and the stormwater budget. Um, the authority will take action, most likely at the next meeting to advertise the budget for public review. Um, there was some news from the stormwater engineer, Mr. Bogowski, that, uh, two of the projects that were slated for this year may be pushed to next year, but, um, I'm not sure if it's time, but, but, uh, that's it, okay.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, we move on, planning commission, Mr. Tillman, who the planning commission did not meet in the month of September, and it is not meeting in the month of October, so I have no report. Thank you very much. Recreation Board, Mrs. Agarton.
So we met, but we did not have a quorum, uh, we, um, we had an original, um, from a member of the community that had confessed to it and talking about getting the state house focal put in front of us, so we'll be waiting for more information, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, any questions for Mrs. Agarton? Hearing none, shade tree, Mr. Booker.
Uh, the shade tree, uh, meeting this week, or last week rather, uh, took the same page as the EAC, uh, and will, is advertised for this Thursday as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Booker?
Hearing none, school board, I was out of town for the, uh, school board meeting, and so I was unable to attend, so I have no report.
Managers report. Uh, just a few minor items, um, there was a big tree that came down in Coeur d'Alene Park, um, it happened to hit one of the, the new trucks, um, the guys were out there working on it, trying to get things first up at the natural playground, pretty substantial branch come down, uh, minor damage to the hood of the truck, it can be replaced and then it'll be fixed and ready to go. Um, they, they're looking at a few things, there's some trees out there that need to come down, the authority did approve some trees to be removed from the basin back here on Elmwood Avenue, so those are going to be coming out, uh, and as soon as the ground gets a little more solid, uh, you'll probably see the guys in the park taking down the, the, some of the big sycamores that are marked for removal over there, so, uh, for the most part, everything else seems to be running pretty smooth. Um, I have to give tremendous kudos to Chief, CH, Curtis, uh, Fire believes everybody else that worked, and, and Chief Neff, I know that might not have had as much to do with it, but, uh, the Halloween parade went off, which pretty much went out of hitch, um, for CH being a first-year guy, I think he picked it up and ran with it pretty well, uh, he's got everything cleaned up and back at Associated Products before anybody knew about it, so, um, it's working pretty well. Uh, I'm waiting on, uh, Engineer Bogowski, uh, for building next door to discuss plans for that moving forward. Uh, we did notice the roof is getting in worse shape, so we're going to have to start taking, going to start moving on that relatively soon, so, that's all I have. Thank you, any questions for the manager? Hearing none, we'll move on to the manager report.
Thank you very much. September twenty-third, concealed car training seminar held at the Mechanicsburg First United Methodist Community Center. Lieutenant Curtis was a great presenter at Full House. Twenty-fifth, Mechanicsburg Resort Association, promoting formal celebration and dedication of the Frederick Murray Tavern and Gardens, all attended by a community interested in craft people. The thirtieth, ribbon cutting at Federated Field for the Litville Fieldhouse, was refreshments and guided tours. The thirtieth, Simpson Library online auction, winner for the breakfast with the mayor was the mayor's daughter, Tara. She could have asked him for the money, no, she wrote a complete package as advertised. October two, officiant, accounting, medical, wedding at the Green World Car Hour, the day before rehearsal, total fee a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The third, day reception held at the Simpson Public Library, celebrating sixty years of service in the Kingsburg area, orders and Kirkwise music. The fourth, evening church meeting, rental units and maintenance were discussed. Twelfth, Halloween parade, great weather, great turnout, kids got their candy. Sixteenth, downtown streets of treats, seven hundred for families and kids. Eighteenth, help with the Chamber of Commerce, ribbon cutting at the Craft Barn Company, one oh three North York Street, end of line, good work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beatty, any questions for the man? Hearing none, we move on to Chief Fries' report.
Do I have, uh, any agenda items?
Okay, thank you. Solicitor.
Uh, you said a comment regarding one of the agenda items, and that is, uh, with respect to the, uh, the, uh, discussion and action to release the letter of credit for Admiral's key land development project, we're awaiting, um, uh, confirmation from, um, Mr. Bogowski that the work was actually completed in accordance with the land development plan, and therefore, uh, my recommendation is that matter be tabled and for action to, that end my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cassidy. Fire chief. Uh, I submitted my report earlier, any questions?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much. I did add in there about the fire trucks that date cares and whatnot in the next couple of weeks, but also I did put in there that there's going to be a lot of training, they have planes at the Bacon House at three thirty, three west, Simpson, so, uh, don't be along with that either if you see simulated smoke coming out of the building, similar to the one that we did not too long ago in Norway, so, there may be other companies that are also, you know, military companies that will be reporting. Do we normally, uh, make notes of that, like on the website, or maybe so people don't pay any, is that something we can do? When we make notices of anything at the, at the Navy base, we usually don't, in this situation, I think it might be a, it might be prudent to do something with that, especially along Simpson Street. Okay. Yeah, just, just put it whatever out on Facebook and so you can make one and show it working. Yeah, the Navy usually gives a heads up when they're doing live training, just so that if we get phone calls, we know, but they do not want it broadcast on their live training. So, so on our end, although, um, there'd be no lot of fire at all, there'd be no hazard there, just, just smoke, and, and also no road. Just give us some dates and times. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it, and we appreciate all the work you do. Nancy Wardle.
Hi, it's a minute, written reports, uh, just want to highlight that thankfully the weather has been significantly quieter in the month of October than it was in September, uh, allowed things to dry out. Uh, I have also worked with the Borough staff to determine kind of a path forward as far as communication. Um, a lot of pre-event communication occurs via email, but we decided that, uh, it would be best for me to have a radio to communicate in, in, in an actual event such as the remnants of Falcus Armida, so I now have that, thanks to Chief Myers, and just need to get it to county to get that program, uh, so that we can make sure that our communication is to best as possible. End of report.
Very good, any questions for Nancy Wardle? Hearing none, we move on to the next item, are there any additions to this evening's agenda? I have no additions to the agenda, sir. Hearing none, we need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Booker, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Um, any, any questions or comments, discussion, hearing none, Mrs. Flair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, Mr. Sizerkian, yours is yours.
The action items before Borough Council on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, discussion and action on the supplement agreement for employee number zero two, two thousand and one. Here's our motion. So, thank you, Mr. Anthony, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Flair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries, thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to release the letter of credit for Admiral's key land development project, this is attachment one, uh, Solicitor Cassidy has made comment on this.
I'll motion the table.
Okay, motion the table does not require a second, those in favor? October. We're going to do it that way.
So we're all kind of surprised.
Yeah, we're going to do it that way for this one. Now, opposed? And, uh, the motion is tabled. Sorry about the confusion there, but I just wanted to hear. Next item.
Discussion and action on the supplement improvement bond reduction request for landmark amounts for phase three of the land development plan for legacy part attached to.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony, seconds, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Flair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the motion as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Government action on the supplemental agreement to the four eight twenty-one contract with Brucard Horn for the survey mapping and appraisal of rail corridor, uh, to the rest of the wastewater treatment plant for future purchase. The proposed cost of the supplement is ten thousand dollars, attachment three.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Mr. May by Mrs. Agarton, is there a second?
Second.
Is that, you, Mr. Whitman, thank you. Okay, it's been brought, we move on, second, is there any discussion?
Where did the ten thousand dollars come from?
Uh, the ten thousand dollars have come from, it would be, uh, match funding from DCNR, so five thousand dollars would come from DCNR, and then the match funding for that would be from the Friends Group, uh, additional five thousand dollars, for a total of ten thousand dollars.
Now, this is just, this isn't to, this is just to make a proposal to purchase it, this doesn't mean any purchasing or anything.
This is, this is what due diligence to come up with a number. Uh, basically, the way it works with the railroad is that you have to make an offer to them, and, um, you know, so, in order to arrive at what that number should be, we kind of need to get to an appraisal, and so we're going back on it, if we were trying to do a property survey to identify what property are we actually talking about, it appears from a preliminary investigation, there's undeeded property there where the railroad used to be, um, in the, on the Mechanicsburg section, uh, so doing a property line survey as well as a wetland investigation to be sure there's no wetlands that could reduce the, the value, and then actually having the appraisal done, that's what will be included in, in this supplement.
This may not be the right time, but can you expand upon the undeeded property comment you just made?
Uh, yes, I mean, if you look at, the best example of it is the jet property, if you look at that example, if you look at one of the exhibits for that, the exhibit we have, um, you can see that it's split into two pieces, and when you look at the actual deed, it's ripped, it, it reads as two pieces, so there's very clearly some missing ground on that one in particular, so it appears also looking at all the properties between, all the properties in the borough, from Church Road up to Sellers and Fellers, appear to be written to the right-of-way line of, of the railroad, so, um, you know, it, it indicates it appears undeeded land there.
That, that was the reason for the question, is that?
Yeah.
Right-of-way for the railroad.
Correct.
Okay. And I think Engineer Bogowski's not here tonight, but there was some question on the ownership of that property that was down along there, because we have, and this is something Ben and I talked about today, just before the meeting, and previously today during a meeting with, um, with Norfolk Southern, we have a significant pump station in the middle of what would be Norfolk Southern's property, um, and, I mean, Councilman Weber, you know what it's like trying to get Norfolk Southern to do anything wrong to the right-of-way with a sinkhole behind your house. Um, they don't allow us on there to do that, but I, I, I have some concerns that this property has already been abandoned and taken over, and in some discussions with Solicitor Coyne, who was involved in some of the, the abandonments down through the, the right-of-way of that railroad, um, this may already be for our property, so I think there's, there, the due diligence is needed to verify that this is unowned, uh, because when we did the grant funding for the compost pad, this is listed as the one we took for Mechanicsburg on those, on all those applications and on the drawings that were sent to, uh, to get the, the chap, chapter ninety-two, no?
No, it wasn't from the.
The ninety-two grant.
It was a nine, a small nine.
Yeah, to get the ninety-two grant funding, uh, for that, those, that property was shown as, uh, unbought by the mechanics. So, I think there's some questions raised, plus PPNL has a rather significant right-of-way going out through there, so, I'm not sure that this property actually belongs to Norfolk Southern, I think, as I said today, I think somebody didn't record something at the county or somewhere along the line, somebody dropped the ball on something.
So, so this due diligence would tell us whether or not, like, we need to buy it from them?
Um.
Or that we did part of the process?
Yeah, hopefully we'll find, we'll discover that kind of information before we get too far down the road. I mean, we have been trying to use these funds very, uh, you know, use a lot of discretion, um, it, for example, with the works property, we were supposed to do an, an entire survey of the whole property, they were out there for one day picking up the, the wetland boundaries, and then we called them off because it looked like it wasn't going to be usable, you know, usable, so, you know, we're trying to be, um, you know, used to, to funding wisely, if something like that came up, you know, in the. the, the funding wisely. If something like that came up, you know, in the process, we obviously would, would call a stop and try to conserve as much funding as we possibly could, so.
And then, it is fair to say that what this piece of project though is more of a feasibility due diligence in terms of whether this proposed corridor would be adequate for a, a, a rail trail?
Correct.
And so it, it's not necessarily going to include an in-depth title abstract with respect to the corridor in terms of the pieces you're doing right now?
Uh, I mean, we did a title with the phase one, we actually did title research, and they booked as much as they possibly could. I would say that this piece was, it was probably the first part of the whole railroad, so it was kinda sloppy. I think this was done like eighteen seventy.
Right.
Um, and I would imagine it was probably a gentleman's agreement, um, at the time, and it was, and the railroad kept all those records in their files. It wasn't recorded in the, uh, in the corridor, so if there exists evidence, you know, unless there's something the borough has, if there exists evidence, if the railroad has it, it exists. So...
One of the things that came out of our conference call today with Norfolk Southern is that, uh, if, if the time comes where a party, in, in a likelihood, it would be the Earl of Mechanicsburg submitting an offer to Norfolk Southern to acquire the, the Tringle, the Tringle Spring section of the rail trail, um, it would simply be Mechanicsburg being the sponsor, so to speak, in terms of submitting an offer, purchasing. At that point, that would trigger, uh, Norfolk Southern to do a lot of, uh, due diligence of their own and, and doing the research, looking at their records, seeing what they can find with respect to titles of this property. And through that process, um, it would be number one, we might be able to clarify then the issue of, of where the legal title of the land is currently. And number two, um, it, it may be at some point during that process that for whatever reason you discover something is not, um, um, does not meet our, our needs in terms of, of being able to acquire title to the land that we need, we'd be backing out of that process. So what's being proposed tonight is a necessary step from the due diligence standpoint, but we will have opportunities down the road then to, um, obtain hopefully clarification on the issues of, of ownership of the land.
And, and what raises another question in my mind about this is the fact that we have an outfall from the sewer plant that goes across railroad right-of-way that we pay seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, I think, a year to lease this property. All right? Um, and they are very diligent with that. So with this, and the pump station is a much more significant setup because of the generator, there's a gas tank, there's, I mean, there's a, this is a massive operation. It's there, it's a very deep pit, and Norfolk Southern is not contacting us about renting this property. So they, they are very diligent on what property they have, because it's a, it's a twenty-four inch pipe that goes across, goes across the right-of-way and for forty, fifty feet, and they are very diligent on that. That came in the same time when they offered that piece of property for sale. Um, so there was a couple of different questions that get raised here as to why this property is not being shown as the borough, because, um, this is, this is the access where the sewer plant basically is what it amounts to. Uh, and the, and the property that goes to Daryl, the driveway that goes to Daryl Kennison's property, um, so there's, there's some significant effects that this is gonna have on there. Uh, one of the questions I have, uh, Solicitor Cassidy, do you have, or you'll be working with Ben going through some of this stuff and developing this, I'm assuming, do you have a cost estimate as to what your fees may be, or would that be?
That, that's hard to gauge at this juncture, Roger, um, only because I, I don't know how much, how much time will be required.
I apologize. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Mike. But I think council needs to be aware that that is also gonna factor into this also.
Well, and my understanding is that the grant, um, budget includes legal fees to the, 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 a small amount, that there are legal fees built into the, the grant.
There, there are, Rich, I'm not sure how much of that still remains, but...
I'm not sure. I think your last invoice is pretty, it brings us up to about the thirty, like around thirty thousand dollars on your last invoice that you sent in.
Well, I mean, from the standpoint of the solicitor, I mean, we had five thousand dollars, which is, which would be outside of what be...
It was out, yes.
Built to you guys, so I, I, I'm not a part of that conversation to know.
Okay.
How much.
Yeah, I have to do, I'm gonna have to do a budget analysis and find where we're at as far as the total amount, what we were, what we've got as grant funding, uh, what the matching funds were from the county, and then where we're at as far as the bills that have been paid out so far, so.
Okay.
So this ten thousand is above and beyond the original, what was it, thirty-five-seven or thirty-seven-five?
The, the original amount was thirty thousand plus, that was...
That was your...
And then there's additional five thousand for your solicitor.
Yeah, the grant money was thirty-seven-five is what we got, because we got seventeen-five from the county, and that was used as the match for the DCNR money.
Right.
So we had thirty-seven-five to start with, um, and I know that your contract was thirty thousand dollars.
Great. So by approval, the, the council will basically release its funds from DCNR. DCNR only works with municipalities, so that's why we come and go through you guys. And basically, your approval allows us to use DCNR, so.
We have a motion on the table that has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Blair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on a two-year extension lease agreement for advanced physical therapy and fitness for building at one oh two West Allen Street, pending Solicitor Cassidy's review, attachment number four.
So moved. Mr. Anthony makes a motion. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pellman. Is there any discussion?
I guess my question was, uh, we're looking at a twenty-four month lease with, uh, I believe it's had two options to renew. Um, would there be any wiggle of remit to, like, uh, increase in rent? Cause I feel like within, like, the cost of the building, like, it's not gonna remain the same cost that it keeps, right?
Correct. She does, she does a lot of, in, she does a lot of renovations on her own, um, and you'll notice in that, that proposal, the letter that she had, there was some talk in there of renovation. She first all that through us, and we, we kinda keep the rent the same. Um, she approached me when, uh, we're getting out about the fire company requesting that, that property. Um, she was looking at potentially retiring in the next four to five years, uh, and she just wanted to be sure that we were going to lobby to use that, and we weren't just gonna pull the rug out from underneath her and say, this is gonna be the new firehouse. Um, so that's what generated this, and then she, when she started looking at it, she realized that her lease expired on November first of this year, um, and she needs to, to renew the lease. She may not go with the two extra extensions, um, and I think we can look at that at that time. And I believe, and Mike has not had a chance to review this, so this is all based on his review.
I have two indicates that the rent will be negotiated at the time of the re, of the re-leasing, so we've got to focus. As far as I can see, not that I'm overturning what people say.
You, you read that exactly.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Blair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion, motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action, uh, the, discussion and action on special events application for the First United Methodist Church Youth Department Annual Sleepout from three PM November nineteenth to eight AM November twentieth, attachment number five.
So moved. Thank you, Mr. Pellman. Here's, uh, no, give me a second.
Second.
Mrs. Agarson. Any discussion?
Roger, is the other sleepout the same night as this was up?
I'm gonna defer to Chief on this.
I'm gonna leave you with that, I don't remember.
I just, I'm just...
I think it's, I think there's this...
I thought it was...
A thing is different, eh?
I think it, uh, too.
I'm not sure.
But you gotta know, okay. But that's not different.
Any other questions?
The other cap off on the face.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Blair?
If I do not hear a negative vote, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. All right, we've come to that portion of our meeting where citizens have another opportunity to make comment. Are there any citizens' comments this time? Hearing none, we will move on to any other business. Mrs. Blair?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Sizerki. Uh, no, I do not have any other business. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I'd like a, I'd like a minute.
Do you have a minute?
Memories. I wish I had just one more fishing trip with my dad. Milk burger, his son Gary, and the Frankenburger tavern. His friends called him Milty. This started with the discovery of the log tavern. It had to go. This turned Milk's interest. What a great piece of history for our town of Mechanicsburg. Milk gave her this passion, interest, ambition, and finances to lead us building to a new location with help, a new foundation. Wizard log tear down, milk shingles, stairs, floor, floor stairs, fireplace, wooden terrace, cake, came together. Milk never asked for public acknowledgement. He did it for his own personal satisfaction. He was this kinda guy. Gary, we're all proud of your father's accomplishments. You only wish you had one more day with your dad, sewing, nailing, and hammering. Here's a two or three grits from this property, may have been past spots and pleasant memories.
Please, please, Steve. Well, I, I must say, it was my pleasure to work on the new project at the, at the tavern, and, uh, every day we were down there pounding nails and, and doing stuff. It wasn't, I know it went by, they just picked up him, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anthony?
Uh, just to remind you that the tree was a week from Thursday, right? Six to eight? Very exciting times.
I don't know why I'm excited.
Just for everyone's benefit, the next meeting is not on Tuesday, it is Monday.
Monday.
Tuesday, after day.
Yes. And, uh, thank you. Booker?
Uh, I just, I have three things. Uh, the tree and the Gregor Autumn, so really my two things. My third thing is, how are we looking to fill our lease pickup, Roger?
When the lease comes down, we'll pick them up. Uh, we did have a suggestion, and we start picking up leaves at the end of August, but they're a little hard to pick up when there's still... So, it's gonna depend. There was, the guys were out today, they were yesterday, four hours, uh, got everything that was down on the Monday route. They were out this morning. Um, weren't many down, there were some down, but not many out. Um, we're, they'll probably run, run one truck until the end of October, and then we'll potentially hit two trucks starting in November.
Cool. Thanks. Mrs. Agarson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Cassidy? Nothing true.
World?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief Neff?
I'll see you then. Thank you.
Chief? Um, hearing no other comments? Meeting adjourned.